God, our Creator of all there is and ever shall be, we ask you to shine your light down upon our city, granting our mayor and council and all the city workers health and wealth, and being able to make the proper decisions for the highest good of our city. We ask you to please let us find a cure for this terrible virus, and we thank thee for all our blessings. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reprieve in justice.
Mayor Scott Tremblay?
Here.
Vice Mayor William Dittmer?
Here.
Councilman Jenny Sorrell?
Here.
Councilman Tom McClary?
Here.
Councilman Tom Consellum?
Here.
City Attorney James Mathieu?
Here.
City Manager Leonard Sossaman?
This time I'm looking for a motion to approve city council minutes from 7:14:20.
Motion to approve minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I wanted to make comments from the general public. I'd like Pastor Leonard Lord at this time to the podium.
Thank you, sir, council. Bless you. It's an honor to be here and serve you all as chaplain. Leonard Lord, I pastor to 8114 Leo Kid Avenue, have for better than 25 years. You know, for the past 23 years, I've joined with Somebody Cures to care for our community. And during that time, there was about 15 years we had good rest here. What was happening is the clerk would call me and we'd line up different pastors in the area that cared for the community, and they would come out and pray and build that relationship. Well, later that changed, and then things started kind of unraveling. So I just want to encourage you. You know, when David became king, he was God's man, it didn't rain for like, I think, three years. And so we sought God what's going, and found out that King Saul had broken a covenant that Joshua had made with the Gibeonites. And through breaking that covenant, they had not honored the Lord. And so through that, it didn't rain. So David sought and made that right. And I know as a chaplain, the two things important to make us great is to honor Jesus. There's one mediator between God and man. And the second thing is to use His word for wisdom, because that's what made Israel so wise until they quit using it. So I just want to encourage you that to get back to the roots that were good for those years when things were smooth. We had problems, but we were seeking the Lord and Jesus, and He took us through graciously. What I do want to share is this Thursday is our backpack giveaway, and with the virus, we're connecting it with the food pantry. So from 11:00 to 2:00, people can drive through and get their food, and been having plenty, a lot left over. And then we're going to have a couple of tents with big backpacks and small ones. And as the families come through, we can give them to keep everybody safe and, you know, pray for the children. Also, if you know what's going on in the schools, Dr. David LaRoche is running for superintendent. He's come to our last two luncheons. By the way, Jenny Sorrell has joined us. We've had the chief here years ago, Chief Brown. We've also had Jack Mariano and some of the commissioners out. Every third Wednesday for years, we've had a luncheon to network the community. So just invite you all to come out. It's every third Wednesday at noon over at our fellowship. Paul, it's a free lunch. And so Dr. LaRoche has been out. So I'm going to vote for him because he wants to keep the girls in the girls' bathroom and the boys in the boys'. So just seems to have a good heart to care for the community. And so Port Ritchie can be great. All we need is Jesus, Lord, and the wisdom of His word. And thank you all so much for letting me serve. God bless you. Thank you, Mayor, and everybody. Blessings.
Thank you, Pastor Lord. The next person that signed up, I'd like to invite David Mueller to the podium.
Thank you, council and mayor and administration for letting me speak. Don't need this. Anyway, I had the opportunity to send in each of you three emails this week. And just by show of hands, did anybody receive any of these? Excellent. Oh, you guys know it by heart now. 5439 Blue Point Drive, Port Ritchie, 34668.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller.
You're welcome. I'm glad to see that. In those three emails were some of the goings-on that at the Port Authority. I know nobody attended the last meeting, but it was quite informative. And I encourage you to go and look at that presentation that was made by, I think it was Howard Miller, on the work they're doing up there at Crystal River. Quite amazing, quite amazing. And my thoughts are is that Port Ritchie could be in the same boat. All that water that flows down the river or through our drains and ends up in Miller's Bayou and ultimately out in the bay or out in the Gulf, we could do something about that and bring and restore the water quality in our bayou and get that grass growing out there, sea grass growing again, and increase the quality of the water, which dovetails back into some of these grants that Allen has been finding and showing us that there's an opportunity out there. And I think we're, we need to really look at partnering with the county and possibly Newport Ritchie to see where we can put our heads together and come up with something like that. And I believe the Port Authority is moving forward in that direction to some degree. A lot of guys looking at that. One of the other things was there's been some Facebook conversation on this boat lift covers. And I believe the ways defined in our ordinance 10-279 Boat Shelters and Boat Slips, it indicates that all boat houses and boat shelters are prohibited within the corporate limit, city limits. However, we don't really have a definition of what that is. So we're saying we can't do this or have a boat cover or boat lift cover, but we don't have a defined term that says what that represents. So I'm thinking that this is a possible opportunity for us to move forward and look at some of these boat lift covers and see if that's something that we might want to move forward in this area. I think they're very attractive. It provides a shelter and shade for your boat. And I think those people that have them on a lift would appreciate if we could, you know, possibly get some kind of cover in there. Pretty much that's it. Thank you, guys, and appreciate your listening to my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. That's all that I see that signed up, but I know that we didn't let people in early because we had a meeting before. So I wanted to know if I could invite anyone else who's here that wanted to speak. And I know we're limited. I sent one in the vestibule, seeing no hands. At this time, I wanted to move on. At this time, I'd like to invite our city manager, Mr. Sossaman, for comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments today. As you know, the recruitment process started about 10 days ago for the next city manager for the city of Port Ritchie. Of course, that contract's with Colin Benzinger. And I think he's been recruiting on his website for about nine to 10 days. I actually placed a call today because I thought a question might come up from you or one of the council members asking what the status is. He hasn't returned my call yet, but I know he's got a number of them in process. It's my understanding that the deadline for applicants to submit an application is August the 7th. And then his, I think what he's advertising is that he will take about 30 days to process, to vet, screen those applicants before, within a week or so afterwards after he's got them down to an acceptable number, usually somewhere around 10, 12, that he would forward to this council for you to narrow down further so you could alert him as to your schedule for wanting to do interviews, if you will. So that's kind of the quick down and dirtyest where he is and his process. Budget update, we're working, when I say budget update, I should say 2021 fiscal year, which is what we're looking to do now. I'd like to get you your agreement, and you can either tell me tonight or within the next day or so, to have workshops on the August 13th and August the 27th. Those are Thursdays. They would meet a Thursday that would be immediately following your regular Tuesday meetings, which would be, because that's the second full Thursdays of August. Obviously, your first meeting in August would be the 11th. Two days later, we could come back and do the workshop, hopefully have a good bit of the information together for you to present, and then come back two weeks later. If that, if once needed, then that's available to this council.
What dates were you looking for, the 13th?
August 13 and August 27. That's my understanding. That kind of tracks what you all are accustomed to, what you did last year. And I would want those at 6:30, if that's acceptable to everyone. If that looks, if that looks good to you, we can get.
Let's see if we can have a by consensus. And I'll start.
Sounds good.
By consensus, those are fine if we can.
Fantastic. Now, change gears and go into the public hearings, because as you know, by state law, you have to have two public hearings. If those are Monday through Friday, they have to be no earlier than 5:01 PM, which we have no problem with, obviously. If you want to have one during the day, you got to have it on a Saturday, which most people around here, I think, want to go boating or something else on Saturdays. So again, following that same schedule is I would like, and according to law, too, they have to be. The second one has to be, has to be held no later than 15 days after you hold the first one. So what I'm recommending is that we look at, again, Thursdays, the Thursdays after your regular Tuesday meetings, and do them on the 10th of September and the 24th of September. That way, they're exactly 14 days apart. So we meet the letter of the law. It's my understanding and talking to the city clerk that that would give us the advertisement possibilities of meet the letter of the law with that as well, based on the times, which is your general newspaper of circulation. So again, if that's acceptable, we can put that budget calendar together for you and get it out within the next few days.
The time was 6:30?
6:30 again, yes.
Okay. By consensus? One, two. Yes, yes. Okay. By consensus, we can agree to those dates and times.
All right. I know our city clerk has noted it, and I have, as well as our attorney. One other thing, if I may, Dallas, our building official got some good news today. We received the communication relative to our ISO rating. And even though the criteria now are much more stringent than what they have been here to fore, the city of Port Ritchie's rating has been maintained, which is a Class III for single and for single-family and multifamily houses, or actually duplexes, I should say, than all other construction is still at a Level III, which, you know, sort of like golf, the lower you score, the better you are. So, and of course, they look at everything there is relative to, you know, your fire protection, your building code enforcement, your rules and regulations, those types of things. And so you don't want to be a 10. So being a 3 is really good. So to be able to maintain that under the new criteria, I think is really good for the city. And obviously as residents, because supposedly the ISO, as you know, is the insurance service office, and the lower the rating, in theory, the lower your house insurance will be. So that's my report unless the board has any questions.
Very good. Thank you. I wanted to open it to the board. Okay. At this time, we're going to open it up to comments from myself and city council members. To my right, I'll start with Councilman Consella.
Want to remind everybody, August the 6th, which is next Thursday, the Citizens Advisory Committee is going to have their first meeting in a while. Be here. Again, like to invite our city manager and our police chief. They're really looking forward to, hopefully you all can make it and meet them and hear what they have to say and learn about what this committee does. And so I really hope that you all could attend that, August 6, Thursday, which is next Thursday. A question, the last meeting, we had some residents, a couple residents from the Lake Two Golf Estates talk about manufacturer home. Has there been any more information on that? Has anything else surfaced?
I don't see that anymore. Testing. All right. Had some conversations with Mr. Foss and without all the legalese, there is a state statute concerning modular construction, which is to be distinguished from mobile homes. This issue is R1 or something, Dallas, what is it? Yeah, so it's residentially zoned. And the issue is the fact that there is a modular home that someone doesn't like the way it looks. And the state statutes is that, you got to remember, you can either build a house on the ground here, or you can build it somewhere else and bring it there. The state says that if it's built somewhere else, the state, you know, certifies it. It shows up, kind of like a shed is the best, you know, they put a sticker in it. The only thing Dallas then does is determine if it's affixed to the foundation and all the other things that go onto it, but he can't say the building's no good. But the bottom line is that we can't regulate where someone builds their house, whether it's built on site or whether it's built somewhere else. So it's my understanding that there's a building in some residential area that's up in the air because of the FEMA code, and it doesn't look nice. The, I researched that issue, and I could read to you from the Attorney General's office. And you're hard pressed to regulate zoning for aesthetic reasons. Okay, you can do that if you have some compelling purpose, like an historic district. Okay, we did that in the overlay district because we're going to have businesses down there. We want them to succeed. It's got to have a nautical theme. But to generalize, that can't tell people, look, we don't want you having a Cape Cod, but we'll let you have a split level. And so the only complaint is, I don't like the way it looks. We can't put a moratorium in because we can't put a moratorium in on modular construction. So it's no different, the fact that it was built somewhere else and put here than if they had built that there themselves. So I don't know if that answers some of the questions.
It does. I'm just thinking, are we expecting other issues down the road, or everything's perfectly legal? Hopefully, those will be put to rest.
Yeah, I'll have to defer to Dallas whether there's any of their applications in to put any others. I guess right now, there's a building there. And Dallas, you can interrupt me, probably know more about this. I seen it myself. Doesn't have a fascia on it. The steps aren't in the front. Do you understand what I mean? But you're not going to change the fact that, you know, these developments are all on ground level. And now vacant land or one that was knocked down is going to be up in the air. It's going to not look great, but that's kind of what happens around Miller's Bayou. You know what I mean? It's just that they're more expensive homes somewhere in the air. So is there any other way to put that, Dallas? You know, is there any other people that have vacant land? I think that's what Councilman Consella is asking.
We haven't had any applications for additional ones to go in. The owner of the property that we're talking about owns additional lots in that same area. He's hinted that he may be putting additional homes up of the same style. And the other residents don't like it. So that's where they're trying to block him out. And I told them via email and everything else, it's a regulated structure. It can come in here. The mobile home or manufactured is with ones that cannot go in, just the modular. And that unit is a state certified, built by two affordability code standards, not HUD or DOT standard, which is a mobile and manufactured. They'll stand up better than Hurricane than some of the stuff that 's still built.
I was just wondering about that.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Something else, I don't know how we regulate the, taking care of some of the right of ways that we have, but saw some complaints about the grass being mowed along Washington Street, more specific, the, from Broadway to Regis Avenue. It's on the east side. Apparently, that vacant lot, they went in to mow it, but everything on the fence to the roadway, it really looks terrible. Is that part of?
No, anything on the inside of the fence belongs to the developer for that property.
This is on the outside, the sidewalk to the street.
That would be the city's property in the right of way.
It's on the backside of the sidewalk, so.
Well, if it's on the backside of the sidewalk, yes, it belongs to the Cody River. I spoke with Don Holton today and got the contact with the property owner to get them out there to clean it up and mow and everything else, so it'll be on the mark. Get it looking better.
That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Consella. Councilman McClary?
I only have two items. One I wanted to commend for the increased communication Facebook. I saw the announcement, and hopefully, you know, continue corresponding with the public and everyone. So thank you very much. The other item I had was actually keying off of what Mr. Mueller had stated regarding the boat covers or the boat lift covers, I should say. And just trying to get some more background on that. I did get some questions outside of Mr. Mueller pertaining to the boat lifts and the boat lift covers, and just trying to get some more detail on that. Why are they banned, or what is the definition of them? Could we kind of look into that a little bit?
I'd have to look it up, but the issues come up before. I haven't looked it up in years. The section of code that was quoted, I don't think, is what's prohibiting it that you just heard a few minutes ago. It has to do with any construction on the waterfront above certain area above the seawall. Okay, it wasn't that section that prohibits it, as we've interpreted. Bottom line is, if you want to do it, you have to change code. You want to allow it. I can tell you both sides of the argument. It's come up before plenty of times. The, it's a line of sight for people across the street that want to see the water. That's all, you know, that's the issue. Most places have, most places don't allow it, some places do. So it's just, as far as, you know, the mechanics of the code or whatever, if you want to do it, I can do it. Okay? So it's not an issue from a legal standpoint.
So it's views versus protecting your boat, essentially?
Correct. And they would have to meet certain standards, you know, from Mr. Foss, I guess, you know, so that hurricanes don't take them away. But it's totally a zoning issue that you can do whatever you want. It's come up before several times.
That's all I have. Thank you. Councilwoman Sorrell? Okay. Thank you. I had just one concern. I heard from a couple citizens, and they, I guess, were suggesting that the seaside was open. And for some reason, I thought there were some pending code issues over there, and I didn't know if those had been resolved, or if anyone had been over there to look at that. Because I remember their, I think their dock failed to be up to code at some point. And I didn't know, Mr. Foss, if you know anything about that.
Yeah, before, I'd allow them to open their doors. They rebuilt the dock. About 75% of it's redecked. They're working on the last 25%, towards where the strip boats are. But from their, the fish cleaning station, the two hooters that end has all been placed, all the deck where the boards are. But they went to the state, they declared themselves having food, which frozen food doesn't count. We've now told. So they're not sailing and serving food because in order to be open, you're supposed to have 51% of your income from sale. By what the state says now, I guess, they're far from open at this time. Not know, it's always a great find.
And from the city's standpoint, I was just concerned about the code issues to make sure everyone's safe over there. So that's what I was kind of driving at.
Yeah, the fire department's been through development. They're clear.
Okay. Okay, very well. Thank you. And that's all I had. Going to pass it to Councilman Dittmer at this time.
Actually, most of the stuff I have, I put under old business and a few to be addressed in the agenda.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I wanted to move on to our consent agenda. I was looking for a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're going to move on to council business. The first item is the approval of the tentative millage rate. And I was going to pass that on to Mr. Sossaman.
Thank you, Mayor. As I said earlier, we're working on the budget, and there's a deadline that we're trying to achieve. So tonight, you need to not set your final millage rate for the year 2021, but the tentative. As you know, right now, your current millage rate is 5.7847. If you decide, like you can do, to do the rollback rate, and we don't have all the state revenues yet, so I would caution you about doing the rollback rate because the rollback would be back to 5.2209. Instead, after discussing with staff, I would look at the standpoint and recommend to you to look at a tentative one-mill increase from the 5.7847 to 6.7847. That would, in effect, raise somewhere in the high $200,000 range, like 290,000 and 290,000 and change. It's my understanding, here to fore, there has been some dipping into reserves as opposed to looking at a millage increase. And I would encourage you not to continue that practice because after a while, the well kind of runs dry, or else gets to a point where it's very low and dangerous. You need to be able to, before your taxes start coming in after the buildings go out, to be able to operate the city as the citizens expect. And to do that, obviously, you need, you know, ongoing revenues as well as those reserves. So my recommendation, again, would be to look at a tentative one-mill increase to 6.4787.
And just set as the maximum, just to clarify.
Yes, sir. And I think what we should by the 13th of August, when we have that first workshop, we're going to have a better handle on all of your reserves, both the restricted as well as the unrestricted. I've already discussed some of the restricted ones that probably haven't been used, that could be used for certain capital projects. I know it's the last meeting. You yourself, Mayor, indicated that you'd like to look at some capital improvement projects or have a capital improvement program. Without that reserve, to be able to be set going toward capital programs, it's really tough to have a capital improvement program. So I've been talking, obviously, with our city attorney, with our city clerk, and he's helped me find some projects in the past that have been discussed by this board, but obviously not advanced forward. And really, the only way to do that is to have the capital. And the only way to have that capital is to start rebuilding your reserve funds, both the, I mean, the restricted ones like water and sewer, for instance, those are restricted, and you have to use them for water and sewer projects, not other general government. And your millage can be used for those other general government capital projects that are needed. And so, again, that's why I'm looking at it. And again, we don't, I talked to Debbie Manns yesterday over in Newport Ritchie, and she's like us, we're still waiting to find out what type of state revenues are going to be available this year because of the COVID-19. We don't know. You know, usually, we already know by now, or cities and counties in Florida would know what those state shared revenues would be. We know they're going to be down. We just don't know how much down there are going to be. And of course, some of that's going to depend on how much longer this COVID-19 pandemic crisis goes on.
Thank you, Mr. Sossaman. At this time, I'd like to open this for discussion amongst council and/or any motions.
Just going back, looking over some of the local cities. Going back to last year, Newport Ritchie was at 8.75 on their millage rate. Zephyr Hills at 6.35, Dade City at 7.15, and St. Leo's at 7.0. And I believe St. Leo doesn't even have a police department. So even at 6.7, we are still by far the lowest. And we are going to have some major infrastructure deals coming up in the city. So it's one thing, even 1% So it's one thing, even 1% might be, people hate raising taxes and of course, I hate paying them too, but that's something we're going to have to look at because it's going to come back and get us later. So based on what we hear from the state, obviously, we'll have to revisit this and discuss possibly that rate.
Right, sir. And as you've indicated, you really won't be setting that final budget number and millage until, oh heck, about two months or so from now, over in September.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. See if, council, any comments and/or motion?
I think this is going to be unusual if I could hear from us. I was hoping for iris, we're not coming to let our residents talk or share or know. We have to be sincere to continue to take care of our residents in ways that they're our best to do, so. We have to think seriously about it. And I hope we don't pay any more taxes than anybody else does.
I'm in agreement with that, but I think one of the bigger issues is we're in a, in a, in a time where I think that not having extra money in the reserves is, is dangerous to the city financially and for our long-term well-being. So I would rather set the maximum and then when the budget comes out, readdress it and see where we're going to be.
My point actually is I thought the maximum may be too low for what we're going to have coming up.
Well, I, I think we should allow ourselves the flexibility right now to go to the maximum, which is essentially what this is doing, and then, you know, really have a good idea, hopefully in two months, you know, where our state revenues are coming in, see where, have a little bit more clarity on this COVID situation, hopefully in two months.
Because this is all going to affect, Penny from Pinellas is probably going to go.
Yeah, Penny from Pasco is going, no doubt.
Pasco, excuse me, yeah. It's going to be.
I'll take it from Pinellas too, though, but.
Yeah, they get more than we do, so. Those are things we have to consider. And if we set this at the max now, at this rate, and we come back.
We can always back it down if need be.
I don't mind backing it down. My, my point was, do we raise it slightly higher? Because if, like you said, we lose all that extra money.
I don't think we can go higher, can we?
We set it at 1%?
We can set it under the, anything under the cap.
I thought it was limited on a.
1% annually or something?
It's probably been during the week before, I believe, 10.
Over a course of several budget years, I thought.
No.
I, I know this one, and we brought it down almost 3%. Down to 3.3%.
I thought you could back it down as much as you want. You can't raise it too much. That's where, and I may be wrong on this.
Technically, you, you could raise it more than this one-mill, which is, is actually more than 1%. But to do that, you have to have unanimity, if I'm not mistaken. There's a couple of different levels you can go. Obviously, you're a five-member board, so three votes could get you to that one-mill increase. To do anything more than that, there's another ratchet up, if you will, that you could go another percent or so to, to that level, but that would take a, say, supermajority or four out of five. To go higher than that, you'd have to have a unanimous vote.
But my point was, say we said 1.5 instead of 1 as a maximum, we can always back down to the original. It's just there in case of emergency and we need it, correct? I mean, that's why we always set it higher.
Like I said, so, yeah, you know what? What you're saying is out of an abundance of cost, you'd rather be a little higher than, than lower.
Right. My point is that I thought being a little higher.
Is that right?
Based on everything that's happening in the world right now, maybe. He said bring in an extra $200,000. If we add another half a percent, it's another $100,000.
140.
Right. Just something to consider because I, I just hate to get caught short when we have those other funds dry up on us.
I don't disagree for logic at all.
Okay.
Do you have anything you'd like to weigh in on this issue?
I do like the idea of Councilman Dipmer raising it 1.5 to have that leeway just in case. Don't know exactly what we need to do, but I like that thought and then be able to.
And it's just the ability to raise it. We're not raising rates right now.
Correct. We're not raising rates, it's just the ability. But also, it's easy to go back, but if we get in trouble, it's an act of Congress to go back up.
Correct.
I think you're right. I think you're right.
I wasn't aware we could do it. I thought we were limited at 1-mill, though. That's where my confusion lied.
You still may be right.
One of the other issues that I have is we have a lot of people in this community that are on a fixed income and that have retired and live in a home where they may not be able to afford if we raise taxes that quickly.
But we're not setting it. We're just saying that's the highest possible.
Correct.
And we've always, we've always done a rollback. We've always come back.
Correct. But even if we set it one and a half percent higher and we decide that that's what we need, you know, I think that's going to be tough on some of our people, especially the fixed, people with fixed income.
But that would be another battle.
So we'll lack of services if we can't afford them.
You could, a, a supermajority vote, Jim and I were just talking, you could bump it all the way to 8.11, 8.1356. But I'm not saying do that now, I just don't want to mutiny on the bounty, so to speak, or with a two-thirds max, you could go up to 8.9, but then that's, that starts really encroaching.
I just think we're cutting ourselves a little bit short based on all the impending financial that's going to come down the road. And we can always roll it back like we have. We're not, we're not setting it. We're just saying this would be our maximum. So I'd like to make a motion to bump that 1.5.
I'll second that.
Before we vote, I, this is something that I really want to be able to comment on. Does anyone have any comment on the particular issue? Mr. Mueller, come on up to the podium.
Dave Mueller, 5439 Blue Point Drive, 34668. Thank you for letting me address you. I think you guys are talking on the right subject, but there's two sides to every coin. One side's revenue, the other side's expense. And it's incumbent upon each of you and our administration and the citizens to look closely at what gets into the budget. Ultimately, this is a great opportunity to reset the levels that this city is performing at and potentially look at opportunities to trim cost and continue on with the various things that we're trying to accomplish. Now, I heard that we're, have exhausted reserves, and I don't believe that's the case because I believe there's funds that have been placed aside that are earning, earning revenue, earning interest, and certainly need to look at all the reserves, and that probably needs to get on the table as well. Just keep that in the back of your mind, that probably need to look at the full picture. The next piece of this equation is ultimately, I know Mr. Saussman is going to do the best job he can, but ultimately, there's going to be somebody else in charge of this later on that ultimately is going to have to live by something that's been defined by other parties. So it's an inherited kind of thing. So it's going to be a tedious task and hopefully, we're able to make those good decisions to make that palatable for everybody here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Reverend Spaldy?
Sandra Spaldy, 8612 Green Street. Hello? You want to raise the percentage to a certain level and you can go that high? But then I feel personally, my opinion, once you do that, you're not being as careful with your budget because you've got that extra to play with. Why not bring it back to raise the percentage after you work on the budget and see if it's really necessary? Because then you'll know if you have to raise the taxes. That's just my opinion. I'll leave you with that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the general public? I'm going to open it up for discussion here. I think one of the issues is it would be great to be able to kind of bump this down a bit, but I think there are some mandates from the legislation that we are working with timeframes where we have to set this, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
Tonight's, technically, you could wait till midnight, before midnight, a couple days from now, because you've got to do it according to, you've got to do it within 60 day, prior, 60 days prior to October 1, which is when the next budget takes effect. So tonight, you're kind of in a line of demarcation, if you will.
Just to kind of further, basically, state legislature says you have to set the rate now, even though you don't know what your budget is, and, or the maximum rate now, even though you don't necessarily know what your budget is. And if you shoot too low, then it's very hard to get it raised up. You have to go through a lot of steps at this point to try and get it raised, whereas right now, we can just do it by a simple majority of the vote. So it's.
It's just a tentative rate.
Yeah, it, it's kind of saying, well, we could do this and then we'll get within the budget, but if we miss, then it's very hard to get it raised to what we need.
And the only other comment that I wanted to make is I'm comfortable following the recommendations, which are going up 1%, but the motion in second is for percent and a half, and, and I'm not comfortable with that, and I didn't know if there's any further discussion or any other opinions before we vote.
Again, we're not setting it. This is a tentative rate.
I understand.
Roll it back to whatever we want, once we find out what the real number is going to be.
That having been said, if there's no further discussion, let's put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
Nay.
For legal reasons, two things. If we could poll the vote, you'll see the maximum millage rate calculator was given to you, you can see the numbers in there. And just so the understanding, if you set a rate of, you know, a certain number, and then when you do your budget process, decide you want to go higher than that, okay? The reason for setting the maximum is so the trim notices can go out. If you go higher than that, then you have to notify every single taxpayer of a tax increase by certified mail, I believe. Usually, this is done, there's, there's your calculating, you see the figures, see the majority vote, the supermajority votes that are there, but, so since it's a majority vote, could you poll the votes just so we have that? Because you have to have a majority vote. I want to put it on the record.
Do we need a majority or supermajority?
That's my understanding. Usually, this is not my issue, really, this is the finance department's, but I believe it's just a majority vote. Majority vote, maximum millage rate allowed 8.1, so that's my understanding.
Okay.
Looking at what's presented.
Can we poll the?
The motion was made to raise the tentative millage rate to 1.5%. I had Mayor Scott Tremblee as a nay. I had Vice Mayor William Dipmer as a yea. Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell as a nay. Councilman Tom McClary was a yea. And Councilman Tom Consella as a yea. The motion passes 3-2.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to the next item up for council business, and that's going to be the discussion of draft for golf cart ordinance. And I wanted to turn that over to our city attorney, Mr. Matthew, for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, at the last meeting, asked to bring this back again. I think you wanted to have more conversation, you know, more thought and conversation about it. The only difference of what is here this evening compared to the last meeting is I gave you the resolution that was passed in 2015. As you can see, what they did was when they passed the original ordinance regarding the golf carts, the city said there'd be a $50 payment for registration, and it was somewhat silent on whether that would be yearly, annually, or just a one-time payment. And I think since that went into effect, that was read to be just a one-time payment. So it's before you, and so it's kind of where you left it. I don't know whether you want to, the way I set it up, just as a reminder from last time, is if you want to give reciprocity to any other city, whether it be Newport Ritchie or otherwise, I've left that, that it could be done by resolution. So in case you wanted to change it at any time, you wouldn't have to go through all the trouble of changing a, changing the whole ordinance. As you can see, when it came to the, it's already done by resolution in here, if you read some of the finer points of the original ordinance. It talks about, well, whatever you want to charge per year, you do by resolution. So we generally do that with a lot of statutes. So if you want to proceed with doing it, let me know if you want to tweak it in any way, you know, I think I've heard some conversation last time, make some of the, there's registration and regulation, if you want to make some of those match or whatever, it's totally up to this council. But I can do whatever you want.
Thank you. I appreciate the introduction. If I may, there's kind of two separate issues. Number one, whether or not we want reciprocity at all. And number two, if we do that, whether or not we want to amend what our ordinance in terms of what we need in order to qualify to get a sticker. And the, I think everybody sounded like they were on board with reciprocity, but my thought and my humble opinion, if we're going to do that, we should have the same guidelines of the city that we're going to have reciprocity with our cities, but in this particular case, it's Newport Ritchie. And their, their guidelines are much more stringent to get a golf cart sticker. And I think that if we're going to pass reciprocity, we should look at their guidelines and potentially see if we want to amend ours to kind of mirror theirs. Some of the differences that I saw reading through them, number one is they require insurance. We do not, and I really like the idea of insurance, whether, my humble opinion. One of this, one of the other big differences is they require a yearly inspection and then they require a yearly sticker with a fee. So what my recommendation was is that, that we have a yearly inspection where we look at the insurance, make sure it's current, charge $25, and just make sure everything works on the golf cart that, that we already have, which are all your safety features, blinkers, mirrors, warrant, et cetera. So that's my opinion on this issue, and I just wanted to open it up for further discussion with council.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
Need to interrupt you, but Section 36-163 of the Port Ritchie ordinance, which is in front of you, regarding regulation, is the Port Ritchie ordinance. Golf carts may only be operated on authorized road by operators with current valid driver's licenses. Golf carts must be covered with liability insurance.
Okay.
So we already have that in there.
Because it's not on our checklist when they actually go.
Which is a different issue.
Okay.
It, it is mandatory, okay? I don't know, I see the checklist from the police department, maybe they provided at the time.
Okay.
They signed that, I don't know, but it's already mandatory.
Okay.
Council says, hey, look, let's make sure we have that. We could put that in a resolution and change it, you know, well, that's, none of that's a problem.
Okay.
That's already the case. Now, it's a matter of, are we doing it?
Okay. So, and then the only other issue is they have a yearly renewal where they check everything and we don't, which I would like to go to if we're going to do this. And I was going to open it for discussion.
I totally agree with that, that these golf carts need to be checked annually and when, to be issued that sticker. We, our police department needs really take a look at and make sure that they, you know, 10 o'clock at night, I see them out there on our roads and, and God forbid, without the lights or, or anything, it could be some terrible problems. We don't need, but having that inspection and redo this, this inspection sheet, I think it, there's a lot to be desired on it. But redo this and add visually, looking at, making sure that the insurance is, is there because, I mean, just verbally saying it means nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Consella. Is there any, any other comment? Mr. McClary?
I was going to say, if we are changing it to a yearly at $25, would there be a way to grandfather people in who paid their 50 for, say, the first two years to, to equal it out so nobody feels like they're paying, paying more?
We could whip the $25 fee the first year for everybody and just move on from there if we wanted to do that.
That's reasonable. Thank you.
That'd just be my suggestion.
The one item I have in terms of reciprocity, I noticed that they have a maximum of 20 miles per hour on Newport Ritchie streets. We have a maximum of 15 miles per hour on Port Ritchie streets. We may want to just clarify that, just so you don't get confusion. We may want to just clarify that, just so you don't get confusion between residents and, you know, I don't know how much they all, they enforce that policy per se, but, you know, keep it consistent across.
And I agree, I, I think the 20 mile an hour makes more sense, because most of the roads, I think, have a 30 mile an hour speed limit.
And I think those golf carts have a governor that basically stops them at 20, but not, doesn't stop them at 15, I believe, I don't have one, but.
Most of them, that's correct, I believe. Councilwoman Sorrell, do you have any, any thoughts?
The only way that anybody from Newport Ritchie, or Port Ritchie can get to one of the cities whose streets are light, will they do that? Is that legal? To cross that 400 mile mark?
I think that's a question for DOT, but I think that's beyond the scope of what we're going to be dealing with here. But the answer is no, I don't, I don't think you can.
We don't have jurisdiction on that road.
I'm sorry, what was, I didn't hear Councilwoman Sorrell's question.
Crossing the US 19?
We, about, thank you, Councilwoman, about four months ago, written inquiry was made of the Department of Transportation, I believe I have it with me. The short answer is no, and the reasons why, and, I can get a few, I, I know exactly what it says, they went through a lot of trouble responding to us. It's the width of the highway, certain entrance points, it's like 15 feet too wide, do you understand, I mean, they went, if you wanted to, but just no way they're going to allow it, okay? They went through a lot of trouble, I'll see the little council members get a copy of that, but it, I believe Dr. Martinez had requested that when it first came up, but it was a pretty big no. Now, that doesn't help you at all in terms of the bigger picture, but whether it's our golf carts or Newport's Ritchie's golf carts, that, you know, they're not going to allow them to go across that highway, it's too wide and too many lanes.
So with that, I'm looking for further discussion amongst council and/or any motions. And the motion that I would be looking for is a motion to allow reciprocity, but also a motion to amend some of those other items that we've discussed. And I was going to see if anyone was willing to make that motion at this time.
Has anyone talked to Newport Ritchie? I'm assuming they're open to reciprocity, assuming we match their criteria, or has that not been, or we're making the first, still making the first move and seeing what happens?
We're making the first move. I, I had a meeting with Mayor Marlowe, and he really liked the idea of reciprocity, as, as we are as close together, and, and I think we're going to have a hodgepodge of golf carts on either side of 19 at some point, so, you know, I would think that, that he seemed to be, have a positive, he was receptive when I, when I talked to him about it. But they, I can't speak for the rest of the council.
The, the only reason I'm asking that is, if we start putting new requirements on, changing, going to yearly, uh, registration, et cetera, and it takes two years for Newport Ritchie to come around and, and give, grant that reciprocity, then we have some explaining to do to our citizens, that we made everything so stringent, and then they haven't done anything.
In my humble opinion, I, I think we should probably put those regulations in, even if we don't grant reciprocity with Newport Ritchie. That's just my opinion. So, you know, I think they're almost independent of each other to a certain degree, because I think that we should take that step, whether or not there's going to be reciprocity, so I don't know, you know, if we're, if we can handle this in two different motions, which may be the way to, to handle it, or if we can put all these motions together. And for legal clarification, I don't know, can we handle it if they wanted to in, in different motions, or any recommendations?
To keep it simple, first of all, if you do, that's kind of why I, I put it in as a resolution for the reciprocity, so you pass it, and then four months go by, you didn't need, that's why I did it that way. Why don't you just kind of address them one at a time, and, you know, first of all, the golf cart regis, you know, the insurance and the driver's license, we already have those.
Okay.
Okay, that, that has to be done, I mean, it's done through the police department, so, he heard you, and he'll do that, but more importantly, it's, you'll need it when you get their sticker each year, and you'll also need it if you're stopped on the side of the road, okay, for both of those places. And I could put that in the resolution, so I, I can put in, if you want to, so in other words, the resolution things are simple, so you, I can put in there, it's a $25 fee instead of a one-time 50 fee, make it annual, okay? And I could also put a proof of registration on it, you know, so I could do that in a resolution. Now, in terms of the miles per hour, I'd have to change the, our code, which is no big deal, I mean, it's right here, you know, strike off at 15 and make it 20, so, that's up to you. So you could probably do those two things separately, you know. When you do the, I presume the rest, if you're going to do the reciprocity and the, you know, the insurance, make sure that happens, you know, show it at the time you get it, and the $25, you could do that in one motion, I guess, and do the changing of the actual ordinance, which is a different issue to the 20 miles an hour, you could do it that way. You can do any way you want, as long as I understand what you want, just vote on it, you know?
Okay.
If you think it's piecemeal, then make several motions, you know, whatever you want. And 20 miles an hour is as fast as you can let them go, okay? It's not, and by the way, here's from, before you leave, if anyone wants to see it, this is the no for the Department of Transportation, if you're curious, and I'll send a copy, everybody.
With that, I was looking to see if anyone was willing to frame any motions on this.
To set the 20 mile per hour limit, across the city of Newport Ritchie, the requirements of assurance of time of stickering, and changing to the 25 a year, $25 per year annual sticker.
And one point of clarification, are we going to, are we going to start the inspections this year? And we're going to start the inspections this year, but the $25 fee in 2022 then?
Like I said, something 40, maybe 50, so I'll, it's right to, and up again for another 25.
So is that part of the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so the inspection will happen for everybody in 2021, but the $25 fee, if they already have a sticker, won't start until 2022?
I, I, I understand the motion. If it starts in January 1st, gives the, you know, police department a little time to get it ready, and number two, as you could do, since it'd be yearly, you can have a different color each year, or whatever you do, that kind of stuff. So I understand the motion, so he's going for everything, he wants everything we discussed, understood, sir.
Does everybody understand the motion, as it sits?
The only question I have is, is there going to be a window for the renewal? I mean, come January 1st, if we set it as January 1st, is there a time period that they have to renew, like our current?
We should give everyone a second.
I, I guess, Councilman, I would presume, put, you know, if I discussed this with Mr. Sossman, that's why January, because I would presume, if this goes through, you know, 60 days earlier, everybody that's holding those, 91 of them, by the way, in this city, gets a letter. Hey, we're changing it to a yearly fee of $25, okay? If you've paid within the last year, we'll give you a credit, but you're going to have to come in each year to, to pay the money, and I presume you want to inspect it each year, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so, so that was, yeah, that's the whole purpose of pushing it back, so, you'd have, you know, send that out 60, 90 days in advance, yeah.
So if you're in December, you have to get your sticker for January 1st, and that will make you through those obligations?
Yeah, that, that'd be details we'd leave to the police.
So with that, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Before there's, before we go any further, I want to open this up to the general public, see if anyone has any comment. Reverend Spaldy?
Sanders, Spaldy, 8612 Green Street. The city of Newport Ritchie, they do cross 19 in their golf carts, I have seen them cross 19. So if, if that's illegal, and when we have people here with golf carts, if they want to cross 19, how's that going to work? Are they going to get ticketed, or just look the other way? What? But they do cross 19 all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, call the mounting police, too, how's that? No, just to be aware of it, that they are crossing, because I have stopped for the light many times and have seen them cross. I don't think it should be illegal if they have the light. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Spaldy. Mr. Mueller? Welcome to the podium.
Thank you, Dave Mueller, 5439 Blue Point Drive, 34668, Fort Ritchie, Florida. I find it interesting that we want to inspect golf carts rather than cars. Cars aren't inspected on our streets. If there's a violation, it's incumbent upon the owner to ensure that those things all function properly. I don't know why we would take it upon ourselves to actually do the inspection. I think you can have an individual file a form indicating this is the situation, that you have to have all these things, and pay a fee and move forward. And if at some point in time, that individual is stopped and found to have something in violation, then it's a point he can be ticketed for that and make them aware of that. You know, we're making this little thing something big, and we miss the point on the big things like cars. How many cars are driving around, nobody's inspecting them? If this taillight goes out, a police could stop that individual and say, hey, you got a, you got a bad taillight. It's just a thought. And we focused on the right stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Anyone else from the general public? Seeing no hands, at this time, we can open back up for discussion. If there's no further discussion here, then we'll look to put it to a vote. Seeing no further discussion, we'll put it to a vote. And everyone understands how the, how it's been framed and segmented? That having been said, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to council business, item five, which is approval of drug recognition expert.
Mr. Mayor, not to interrupt you, I'll, I'll bring it back as a draft next time, because there's a lot of moving parts here, you get a little extra time, we got time, right? So I'll bring it back and I'll go through what it says now, is that all right with everyone?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay, sorry. So I wanted to go back to council business, item five, which is approval of drug recognition expert, which is DRE, overtime reimbursement grant, and for that, I wanted to pass this to Mr. Sossman for introduction.
Uh, yes, yes, Mayor, it's my understanding that this is an overtime reimbursement grant. It would not exceed $500 within the agency. Currently, the city has only one certified DRE as part of the police department, and I know we have our, our, our new chief, Cyrus Robinson, as well as Captain Koch here, so this will allow for reimbursement of overtime for the DRE to conduct an evaluation, and the amount of the overtime, so it's, it's not going to cost us anything, actually it's going to, will pick up some money for the overtime reimbursement, so unless the chief and the captain disagree, which I don't think they will, we'd like to recommend that you, that you approve.
Thank you, Mr. Sossman, any need for discussion?
Yeah, I have a question, this is just, the timeframe on this is just good for a year?
Yes. Yes, only good for a year at this point in time. Renew it every year.
But have this overtime, I mean, have we experienced, have they experienced more than that $500 limit?
No.
How often have this off, this officer been used? Out of curiosity.
Officer Williams is currently our DRE, and he's done, he's, throughout his tenure is doing so, he's, he's done several, probably most of them have been during the course of his normal shift. It's only a couple of occasions that we've actually had to call him in on an overtime capacity to, to conduct the DRE evaluation, so that the, the frequency of that is not, is not very great. What this grant does is it allows us the opportunity, if we have to use him in a, in a time that he's off, and we call him in as a recall, that any, any salary that goes to him is subject to that reimbursement. So basically, we can, we would be calling him in at the, at the expense of the, the grant, up to the, the amount of that $500 maximum. And it counts, it can go for us, or mutually for other neighboring agencies as well. So for example, if we were taking part in a multi-agency enforcement wave or something like that, we could actually have Officer Williams come in and be part of that wave in performing the, the DRE evaluations as necessary, and, and that would count towards the, the reimbursement, so we could participate and, and use his expertise at basically no cost.
So the maximum is $500, nothing greater than that, just in case we get a busy year, he's called in more than?
Right, and, and I, I believe, I have to clarify, but I believe that $500 is actually per occurrence, I don't believe it's throughout the duration.
Okay.
So rough math, it would be roughly about 13 and a half hours of, of him doing evaluations. An average evaluation would probably take about an hour or two, it's a, it's a little bit more extensive of a, of a process than a typical DUI investigation that you typically see or familiar with on the, on the roadside. So he's got some specialty techniques and stuff that he does to, to make that, that evaluation and that expert conclusion.
So this is per occasion, not just?
My understanding is the dollar amount is per occasion, but before we, we reach that amount, that we'll, we'll definitely get that clarified so that we don't exceed it. And if, if, if there were an occasion that we did need to exceed those hours in a grand total, we would be in the same situation we are currently, to where we would have to utilize him. The only difference is, we would bear that expense as, as we would today if we had to call him in. It just takes some of that expense and puts it back onto another entity.
And can I, can I kind of touch on that for a moment? Because he's also our traffic homicide investigator, and they kind of overlap, if I'm not mistaken. A lot of our homicides are a result of, or spawned DRE investigations, or a need for DRE, correct?
They, there can be an overlap there, it's not an automatic, I know in the last two years, we'll say, we've had, I believe, two serious injury motor vehicle crashes that were, were alcohol-related, resulting in, in extensive criminal charges. So there, there is definitely a potential correlation there. So as long as he's, as long as he's doing the DRE evaluation, that portion of the, of it would count towards this grant. If, if we call him in to do a, a traffic homicide investigation in and of itself, that does not apply towards this, this is just for the DRE evaluations.
Okay, but if there's a homicide where there, he also does this evaluation, we would get reimbursed for that? Because I know the, the homicide investigations require a lot of time, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, sir, they could be, they could be quite extensive.
Okay.
I would submit that I believe we, we could probably make a case that the portion of that investigation that he did, the, the DRE evaluation, would be, would be subject to this.
Would be subject to reimbursement, okay.
The remainder of the, of the investigation, I don't know that that would necessarily fall into this category, though.
Understood, thank you. Did anyone else have any comment or question? That having been said, I was looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the drug recognition expert overtime reimbursement grant contract.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item up for council business is the renewal of anti-human trafficking data collection agreement, and I'm going to pass that to our city manager, Mr. Sossman.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. As you indicated, this is an anti-human trafficking data collection agreement, and this is for Pasco County. Currently, this agreement, which was, was approved last July 2019, expires the end of August 2020, and the new, the new renewal will be for a two-year timeframe, so that gives you more, more time. Every agency, law enforcement agency, all the municipalities, their police departments, as well as the Pasco Sheriff's Department currently participate, so I guess we're going to be the last one in, if you agree to it tonight.
So I guess we're gonna be the last one in if you agree to it tonight, and we do recommend that, that you do approve it, and that will allow us to participate in that collection of, of data for anti-human trafficking, which we all understand is a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Sossman. I was gonna open this up for discussion and/or motion with council.
Motion to approve the anti-human trafficking data collection agreement.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. That concludes our council business, and it brings us to old business. I know that I've been starting to my right, so we're gonna start to my left with our vice mayor, Vice Mayor Deppmer.
I have a few items on old business. One will have to go to the chief or the captain on the update on the CAD system.
We, we spoke with a representative from Pasco's IT section just today, actually had contact with them to get an update, because we hadn't heard from, from our last correspondence. If you remember, the last time we were here, the captain mentioned that we were looking to get refresher training for the agency personnel, because they have been since September, October of last year, that they had that initial training. According to the representative from Pasco, he had reached out to their training coordinator, and he has not heard back from them yet. And once he does, they'll set the dates for the training, and after the training is completed, we can go live at any time after that.
All right, but they've been really dragging their feet on this. It's, this has been going on a while. All right, thank you, chief. Followed would be for the city manager regarding Nick's Park Boat Ramp, assistance from the county. You were gonna have a chat with them, I believe, last time we met.
I'm still waiting on an answer from, from the county, but we, we have discussed it with AERIS Engineering, and they are working on updating it so they can freshen it up, and then we can go live with, with the bid, but it's my understanding that there's $228,000 based on the research that we've done that's available for. Unfortunately, the previous bids came in, one came in at $296 and change, it was rebid, and the same construction company rebid it. They still came in at $289. So if we can get it down right now, it's from what Chris Martin with AERIS Engineering is telling me, that he's seen a lot of, a lot of projects come back. So we're trying to do that, get it to come back to us at $228 or less.
And have we got a commitment for what the county is willing to, to do for us with that?
It's, I, I know the, the commitment that they had, plus the other reimbursement that we have to reimburse, we have to spend it, is, is a total of $228. If we can get any additional money out of them, I will find out. As a matter of fact, I have found if we could use it for this, if it meets one of the national objectives of this community development lock grant program, sometimes you hear CDBG. The city did not use its allotment last year. I think our total at that time was just under $15,000. I'm talking to Denise Lindsay with Pasco County, who's gonna actually come visit me tomorrow, and I'll find out if it's national objectives, and I'll have a, a further update for you at the next meeting. I said, well, can we roll that, excuse me, can we roll that $15,000 from last year into the next year? It's her understanding of mind that we can, so that would give us a total of 30. That would come close to making up the difference.
Yeah, right, okay. And then the last one is, we discussed this last meeting also, review of our water rates. We want to take a look at that for the same reasons. I know we're the lowest water rates currently, I think, in the county, and for the same impact that we're gonna have for everywhere else, we might need to look at that, so it's something you can get together for us on where everybody else is currently, and what we have to look at for future.
Right, and, and it's my understanding, it's probably yours as well, that we have some of the lowest water rates around.
We do.
And I've talked, already talked to one company that, that does, that does those types of analysis. And obviously, I've worked some with Sean Uhas, who's here, our utilities director, and he agrees. I think the last update was back in 2013 or something, or something like that, or seven or eight years ago. Our city clerks are agreeing.
At one point, we froze any increases. It was supposed to be an increase per year. We froze the increases, and that goes back probably, probably that far, right, so?
The 2016 4% increase was, was waived.
It was waived, okay.
Right.
We need to revisit that, like I said, for the upcoming shortfall we're gonna have in finances, I believe, from this, from the COVID, so we need to readdress that, take a, a new look at it.
Right, we'll probably have to go out to bid, because I just, just like, even though we've got like 3,300 customers, you know, within the city, as well as outside of the city, it may come in above the limit that, that I could just, you know, bring it back to you and put it on the consent.
That's fine.
So, well, I'm looking for a couple other companies to do the same type, that have good reputations. We can put it out and bring, hopefully bring it back within the next couple of months.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Thank you. And for old business, all I had is, I know that there was some discussion about boating and boating safety, and I was out with my family on the water over the weekend, and I saw pretty much all different departments out there policing, so it looked like it was well policed. So I wanted to, and I saw our boat out. I don't remember if it was weekend or not, but they've been out, so I wanted to thank the police department for their efforts. And that's all I had.
How many people do we have to train?
It would have to be the, the entire patrol division, any other entities that might have access to the CAD system.
There'd be a dispatch also.
Yes. Roughly 20, yes.
We've been waiting for this CAD system for over a year now. The county is the one that's been dragging their feet, we're really looking forward to being able to complete this information. So I hope that happens. But the labor's not been on behalf, on the part of the city, it's been on the part of the county.
That's what I understand as well. So we're trying to keep one top of them, but you're gonna lose so much when you are not the one in control.
But you're at the mercy of the other.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. McClary? Mr. Cancelo?
The only thing I have is, is there any more information on the DEP permit extension application?
I didn't understand the question.
The DEP permit extension application, the last meeting, you were, had discussion earlier.
Right, and I've discussed it with Dewberry Engineering, who's handling that, that project for us, and they have, they have applied for the permit. We just haven't received the, the actual approval yet. The current permit, it's my understanding, doesn't, doesn't expire until sometime this October, and I know we're edging in on that late.
Correct.
Not quite as fast as a bullet, but at least fast enough to be a little spooky, but I'll check with, with Dewberry again tomorrow and, and see if they've got an update for us.
That's all. Thank you. That concludes our old business. Looking for a motion? All in favor?
Aye.